Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Good evening and welcome back, everybody. Nice to see everyone, and I hope everybody had a wonderful summer. Effective September 1st, 1991, Chapter 9 of the Laws of 1991 require that we inform persons other than students who attend meetings within a school of the proper procedures to evacuate a building in an orderly and timely manner in the event of a fire emergency. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, please exit through the doors located on the north side of the gym, turn left, and proceed directly to the outside, or you may use the door located in the northwest corner and proceed directly outside of the district office. Regarding public comment, at the designated time, the public comment portion of the meeting will be limited to residents, business owners, or employees of the Baldwin School District, and is limited to 30 minutes and a maximum of three minutes per person. We cannot comment on issues of personnel or individual students. In an effort to ensure a respectful environment, we ask that you prepare your question or comment on the form located at the back of this room and place it in the box so that it may be collected and read during the question and comment section of this meeting. We will call you up to the microphone when we arrive at your question or comment. If we do not have an answer to your question or need to contact you with further details, the information that you provide on the form will be essential. As always, we thank you for your respectful comments and questions. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on August 10th, August 22nd, and August 30th, 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Move by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasures Report for the month of July 2022 and accepts the receipt of the Revised April 2022 Report, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Move by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Sherry Cammy.
Thank you, Mrs. Coles. As we do on the first meeting of the new school year, we report on the highlights of the summer and the highlights of last school year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to start to Mr. Miniala.
Today's presentation is on highlights, achievement highlights from the high school for the year, as well as highlights from some of our summer programs. Our summer programs have been very successful. We've got participants of several key staff members who I'd like to take time to introduce. So we have Trish Walda and Jamie Lanza, who helped with our pre-K to second grade program. This is Grayne Correll, who facilitated and oversaw our middle school program. We have Juliana Rashwan, who oversaw our ESY program. And Dr. Trina Palmas, who oversaw our ENL program this summer. This summer, with the movement for education support, we ran numerous work programs before to support our learners. And there are tremendous highlights, so we're grateful that you decided to share these with us. First, I want to start with some achievement highlights from the high school from June. The slide for you represents our high school graduation rate trend, five-year trend. We're very proud, teachers, students, entire staff, the high school worked extremely hard to maintain this very high graduation rate. The 97% true graduation rate really translates into there was one student who did not graduate, and there were a couple of students with more severe cognitive disabilities who are in that graduation cohort, but they don't graduate by the typical graduation standards. And that one student did graduate in August, so we're very proud of the 97%. It is outstanding, and to keep this trend consistent over the years is another feat that deserves recognition. Another very statistic is the Advanced Regent Diploma. The Advanced Regent Diploma requires three additional regents than the traditional regent diploma. So it's more rigorous. You have to take three math exams, algebra one, geometry algebra two have to be passed, and there are two science exams, which is the additional exam. Whereas the Regents Diploma, it's just one science exam, and then just one math exam. 75% of our students earned the Advanced Regent Designation this year. You can see the steady climb each year. More and more learners are taking the advanced classes and being successful in those advanced classes. They did the star this June 2022 because, and in June 2021, because this was during the pandemic, and there were exemptions, different appeals that the state did approve, allowing students to earn credit for the exams if they were credit courses and passed other type of exams. So that's why they're business star. They're still a very proud number, because our students have worked individually and finished successfully. Another important slide, and a point that we consistently look at, is our graduation rates by different subgroups. We always look at male, genders, race identities, to ensure that our students are graduating, that there's no gap, right? That every student, all students are graduating aligned with our organization principles. And again, I'm very proud to say that you'll notice over the course of the last five years, there is no significant graduation gap. All subgroups are graduating in 97%, 99%, 98%. Students with disability, it's SWD. Once again, there is a part of students with disability to have more cognitive abilities that are included in cohort, but cannot graduate by age of children. So again, it goes to the high school, entire staff, and to our parents and learners. Another beautiful trend that I like to present is our AP exams-taking trend. The lows over the course of the past seven years is one of the six-year trends. We have more and more learners taking advanced placement courses. Again, this goes back to our students are being successful in those more rigorous regent courses, and therefore, they have the opportunity to take the more advanced placement courses. So we are up to 973 total exams taken, whereas back in 2017, the number was around 600. Maybe that's not 620, if I'm correctly, exams taken. So it's a beautiful increase and trend. And this is one of the data points that US News weekly looks at when making their determination of schools that earn that recognition. The more students take the AP exams, means more opportunities for AP scholars, AP scholar honors. So you'll notice another data point that we keep an eye on is how many students earn that Spanish honor. And this year, there's a pretty nice jump. We had 67 AP scholars in 2021. This year, 88 AP scholars. So a lot to be proud of. The AP Capstone Diploma is a unique diploma. Where students have to take AP Seminar and AP Research. Those courses are very unique because most AP courses are very content-rich and content-heavy, whereas AP Seminar, AP Capstone, AP Research are student-driven, interest-driven, and it's more about the skills and the thinking work that goes behind it rather than the actual content. So that's the Capstone, and more students are taking those courses and being successful in them. To earn a Capstone, you also have to pass several other AP classes. So it's not just AP Seminar Research. It's also those two conjunction with other AP classes. There's a very difficult to earn that. Once again, the AP numbers are one of the criteria that US News looks at. And the high school, I'd say, has now earned this designation in three years in a row. And constantly improving in that ranking. Next, I'd like to turn my call over to Islam Zuhra, who will discuss and share with you the kindergarten Jump Start Program, the second grade program.
Good evening, everyone. So we're excited to be here to share a little bit about the Jump Start Program, which allowed us to host incoming K through second grade throughout the district and across the school. So the goals of the program for our preschool students were to expose them to classroom routines, allow them the opportunity to practice their social skills through play, and expose them to readiness skills and math and literacy. For our incoming first through third graders, again, it's a reinforcement of those classroom routines, and it allowed us the opportunity to help them pull in all those learned skills that they've gained throughout the course of the school year. And we also were able to incorporate the Ruler Program, which extended that social-emotional piece for the school year, which was wonderful for all of them. The small class sizes, it allowed the teachers to work in small groups, and it provided an opportunity to have individual student conferences. Those individual student conferences were so important because it allowed them to target the needs for the students in their classrooms. They used center-based activities to target math and literacy skills, and we incorporated the MyCAT lesson. We encouraged them to work on them at home, as well as touch upon them in the classroom to monitor progress and target areas of need. And the use of manipulatives really targeted each learner and, you know, for math and literacy, and really provided a multi-sensory approach to learning.
We had 156 students enrolled in the program in that part of the school. We did that Monday through Thursday for a week period in the morning until noon. The program started on July 6th, then we moved it on August 4th, allowing the students a happy weekend of construction. Students started their day with a morning meeting. The pre-K students then did various shortened activities to prepare them for kindergarten. And the students in K-2 spent an hour on literacy skills, where there was a mini lesson class, and then they broke into small groups. In center activities, and the teachers did letter reading lessons, small group construction, strategy lessons. And then they participated in hours of math activity, construction, and then there was a mini lesson, and then there was small group construction and center activities. All students had the opportunity, in the middle of the day, to participate in rows from our plate line. The program outcomes, all of our pre-K students left the program being able to walk in a straight line, raise their hand, share, take turns. They learned how to write their name, and they began learning about letters and sounds and numbers to pretend. Our students in K-2 left the program on the same reading level that they entered the program when they agreed, because they didn't have that summer slide. And Jamie mentioned they participated in the MyCAT, My Ready lessons. So they continued working where they were at. So overall, the program was highly successful. And the most important thing is that children had fun while working. So thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce Grayne Correll, who did the middle school summer.
Hi, good evening. How's everybody doing today? My name is Grayne Correll. I am actually one of the middle school guidance centers, and I had the pleasure of maybe coordinating the middle school summer enrichment program this summer. So I just want to walk you through a little bit of how it's carrying on in middle school. So this program offered our sixth and seventh grade students early access to the curriculum for the next school year in the area of ELA and MAA. So the sixth graders were introduced to the seventh grade curriculum for the summer, and the seventh graders were introduced to the eighth grade curriculum for the summer for ELA and MAA. And it allowed them to get that head start, to perform even better. If you get the academic confidence that they so rightly deserve, and they do have, it's a continuing thing. Our program was Monday through Friday. It is from 9:00 to 12:00. 90 minutes of ELA, 90 minutes of math, 22 days in-person, all at the high school. And wanted to be a part of our program the students have to fill a criteria. So the criteria was based on their performance in previous school year. It was also based on their I-R-E-T scores and teacher recommendations. And if you noted at the bottom, there's some really nice graphics, and I wish I could fill it up with Google, but I did not. Those were some final projects done by our students in our math program, and I'll talk a little bit about what that final project was. Okay, so to dive into our ELA, our sixth graders and seventh graders focused on their summer reading. So the sixth grade book was the book Co-Talker, and the seventh grade book was the book Death and Colder. And each book had a theme that resonated throughout the summer. So the sixth graders focused on the question, "What does it mean to survive?" And the seventh graders focused on "How do we become the agents of change?" I have to tell you, being in the classroom, having students having conversations, they were respectful, they were kind, they agreed, they didn't disagree, and they worked so wonderful together. There were a lot of activities going on. They also provided some quizzes to make sure that they were keeping up to date and understanding the material in the book. And then there was a commenting activity at the end in which we did a PowerPoint. So the PowerPoint presentation is a little different for the sixth graders and the seventh. The sixth graders focused on gaining information from the book. What did you learn? What was the main idea? And they had to take all that information and present it to their teacher. The seventh graders, they had to really dive into what an agent of change means to them. So they had to pick somebody that is an agent of change to them, research that person, create a PowerPoint, and then present it to the class. And to be honest, it was so nice watching them. I've shown some pictures, and I appreciate you. They did such a great job about who they feel is powerful in their lives. So it's example, we're interested in that. So for math, like I said, the sixth graders focused on the seventh grade work. On the left column, these are the concepts that they had addressed in the classroom. And in the seventh grade, they had that element of readiness. So on the right column, these are the topics that they had addressed. Within the classroom, we focused on Delta Math. So we had the pretext and the concept, so we could see the wonderful growth that we had in six weeks. Took some wonderful action shots on the left side. It is a candid shot of our sixth graders learning math, and the seventh graders on the right. Proud to say we had 130 students participating in our program. I personally spoke to all 100 of the parents. And when I presented this program to them, the feedback from the community was so wonderful. The parents were very excited to receive the support for their students. I had one or two parents leaving kind of a not letting me finish. She said, "That's it. I want them in no matter what. I want them to do it," which is really, really wonderful. But I did know any middle school students coming to a summer program, I wanted to address it and explain to them exactly what this program was, which is a typical summer program. It was a gift I received from them. So as a guidance counselor, I knew all the students' social-emotional needs and their academic needs. So I met with all of them prior. We had a meeting, and I explained that this program is our gift to you, to give them a thoroughly exposure, giving them wonderful confidence. Because without the barium, who lived in the school? It, you know, it only matters so much. The parents want it, I want it. I'd let them see that most of them. They were so excited and supportive, and really wanted the program, which is really, really wonderful. And it was great to see. When they were in these classes, they were engaged, asking questions, and thoroughly enjoyed themselves. I can tell a personal story. I have a student who struggled a little bit last year, because of having a baby in the background, wanted to raise his hand, didn't want to participate. He knew I wanted the program. So it happened to be the teacher for the year, the same teacher for the summer program. He and I also participated in raising his hand, sitting in the work. I put a positive vocal to all the parents, the parent colleague, I cried with her. He had that aha moment. And we had a number of students with that aha moment. And it's just so nice to see. I could tell you all about how great the year is, but this is my friend Amanda, and Amanda wanted to share her view of what she thought of.
Hello, Amanda. Welcome. I'm going to eighth grade. And this program has helped me a lot because I previously didn't use my I-R-E-T and I'm learning math with more things and facts. And this is easier. And in ELA, I'm doing my self-driving. And math, I'm doing my art cell. And it's always coming. And it's something I learned in the second grade.
I do want to say thank you so much for letting me share my experience with these students. They had a great time. I enjoyed them. And I'm going to continue monitoring and see the sort of progress that they're continuing. And I really want to consider the whole way. They're excited. If you know, they learned something in the summer. That's it. Over. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'd like to now introduce Dr. Almar to speak with you.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight to speak to you about our ENL Summer Program. There were a lot of new things happening this summer, starting with the inclusion of our high school students. In the past, students used to go to the Moses Program at the high school, but we decided it was a better fit and more instruction for them to actually join the middle school program. And so instead of getting just an hour of instruction, they got three hours at the before weeks. And it was also fully in-person. It was here with 72 students. I think that was a new record for us, with students from all language proficiencies, starting with students that essentially just entered the district, maybe a couple of months before, to students that were on the cusp of gaining proficiency in English. We had six ENL teachers, six excellent district teachers. And for the first time, we were able to do something special with the help of not only our Title III grant funds, but also our Title IV grant funds. And we incorporated trips into our curriculum. So students were able to go to the Long Island Children's Museum. They were able to go to the Great Order Aviation. And all of the students were able to go to Jones Beach or our mental center. And that actually became the curriculum. So one of the things that the ENL Summer Program strives to do is to make sure that students are constantly reading, writing, and speaking English instead of possibly being at home and not having that language development. And so we were able to do that through curriculum. And the teachers created curriculum about animals, and environment, and ecosystems that matched what they were going to see in Jones Beach. And they also did create a curriculum to match talking about flight. Students were created kites and rockets when they went to the Great Order Aviation. And the little ones learned about the science of bubbles and building. And one of the other things that the program strives to do is to actually fill gaps. Many of our students are immigrants, immigrant students that have not grown through our holding system. And so they have not experienced the traditional parts of the curriculum that other students have. In the classroom, we also had animals. We had fish and butterflies, which is typical of the K-2 curriculum. And we had students that had never done that before in their childhood education programs in their country. And so we were able to fill in those gaps so that they would also have those experiences that our traditional involved students have. Another wonderful thing about our program is that we have a partnership with Obstrat and Queens College. We have 14 student teachers, which allows us to have really small groups. And in those small groups, students got targeted instruction with reading skills, vocabulary development, guided reading. We continued our writing workshop, reading workshop while we're there. So our program complemented the program during regular school year and allowed for students not to have that accident. And I'm also happy to report that one of the things that, one of the happy unexpected outcomes is that it also created a really nice bridge for our fifth grade students coming into the sixth grade, and also for our eighth grade students going into high school because they had their current teachers. So they were able to get to know them and build that rapport and relationship. So when they walked on the birthday, I saw them smiling and happy to be there, happy to see teachers that they met over the summer and they worked with, and they were ready to. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm now going to turn it over to Juliana Rashwan, who was the principal of the Extended School Year Program.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's been a few weeks, so it's kind of nice to reminisce about the summer. Now we're cool, so that's good too. So the goals of the Extended School Year Program were to increase success and improve the lifestyles of all of our students in the special education programs. The lifestyle is a really big part of the program, and I'll kind of speak to that a little bit. Increasing our math and reading proficiency in our 15-1 classes was crucial to maintaining all of the learned academic skills that they had from a previous school year. And celebrating all the social and cultural identities of our students. Every single student is different, as all of us know, so it was nice to kind of point out some of the strengths that our students had to help those students that needed their assistance. One picture you see here on the left speaks to the lifestyles of our older high school students that were preparing lunches and snacks for the program and other students in the program. You'll see in the middle some writing, and some, a lot of reflecting, and a lot of exciting writing that went on in 15-1 program. And on the right, you'll see some word work to kind of continue that foundation that those K-2 students were highly in this whole year. So we had 10 cool classes of students with all various needs. We had seven 811 classes for full day. We had one half-day program that targeted the 15-1 students K-2. And that was not a mandate on their IUP, but it was a recommendation to basically prevent essential regression for students that were at risk. We also had two 15-1 classes, one with a K-2 program, one with a 3-5. Also, non-the IUP is something that we recommend to those students who need to improve the full learning skills. We were fully in-person at the middle school. Technology was a really big part, especially for our older students, as well as maintaining a functional language of our students that use different communication devices throughout the school year, and at home too. Outdoor learning was a big part of it, especially to stay cool, because it was hot this summer. But they really enjoyed a lot of the... Our staff really did a good job in kind of utilizing what was there. So we had a garden that the older students would, you know, water and take care of, and take notes on. So that was really helpful for our 811 students. On the right, you can see one of our students who looks like he's eating popcorn from our carnival day, which I'll explain. And he, actually, this big student uses Chromebook in that classroom with all the other students. There were a lot of technology that a lot of our 811 teachers at the upper level... level tried to incorporate in the classroom. Carnival E S Y. So one of the last days of the program, we kind of wanted to hone in on some of the learned skills from the summer, as well as kind of introducing new skills and really life skills. So every single child was involved in setting up the carnival, creating materials for decorations, handing out tickets. The kids absolutely loved it. We had plenty of games, as you could see, tattoos, painting, and it kind of allowed our students to not, don't necessarily maybe get to go to a carnival and get that exposure, because it can become overwhelming. And we allowed for, you know, different sessions and to kind of limit the sensory overload for our students, and they really loved it as a result. The staff was great this summer. One of the really big things I think that was important as well was transitioning our students that were maybe in outside placement, and they first were coming to Baldwin this summer. That allowed them to kind of get to feel structure, routines, and our students that were transitioning to maybe mainstream, into a different program. So I personally loved to see the excitement. Carnival E S Y was exhausting, but so worth it, as you can see in the pictures. And I just appreciate the opportunity to work with all the special education students this summer, so thank you. And I'll reintroduce Ms. Tamara.
So the last program to share some highlights with is the high school program. It's our program that serves students in grades eight, twelve, eighth graders because they currently take high school courses in the eighth grade. The goal of the program is predominantly credit recovery, so the students build the course and what the regents, they recommend for summer school. So it's purely based on that once at the end of the year. The program ran Monday, Thursday as well, July 6th to June 15th. There's a total of twenty-three days of instruction. Again, holding persons, you heard, each course for one hundred and ten minutes, so it's towards that time, that time for your teacher and your learners in that classroom. Four hundred and forty-three total students were involved in one more class this summer, or a total of eight hundred and seven seats. Seats is by impression, and I've been three classes, so therefore I take up three seats. So it was a tremendous program. Critical though, because that's how we are maintaining that ninety-six, ninety-seven percent graduation rate, because we are identifying learners early that might have missed the class or missed the I credit, and we are providing information right away. So it was a very robust program, very successful program. Ninety-six percent of students were given the D credit, so they're back on track with their cohort, which is critical. Programs saw a value to a lot of young. And that concludes our program. I apologize, school, the program, but like I said, there's a lot of wonderful work this summer. Really could not have been done without those who spoke here tonight. So I really want to thank our coordinators. They started planning in April, because how early we start, hopefully goes out, hiring, planning, curriculum conversations. So we do kudos to you guys, and very much of your time and your help this summer. Any questions?
I have one. I was really, I made a note for myself when they were presenting the program for the youngest students, but it goes, I guess, for all of them. Was the curriculum, all the different curriculums, were they developed by the teachers themselves?
So here, for our elementary program, we really looked at where the students were at. We used, you heard, I Ready dot wins and I Ready gives us hoopings. So other people here for you, Jamie and Trish, group students based on needs, so a classroom of four or fifty groups. So those learners made one classroom, all had the same needs. So the curriculum came from really I Ready and the next morning, the carnival, so students needed to do next.
Okay.
So it was built within that program. High school program is just really taking up the core of the curriculum, at least to be covered. We use the group prints, and Bosie does offer the curriculum for that. So it's like Level One, but Eric Adam, with the most important concepts, are inspired for next year. You heard, E S Y program, the teachers created, and Dr. Almar is, the teachers created the E and L program, surrounded around outdoor learning. So it was a physical field trip, it was more of a learning experience, because all the learning around that experience, from the reading, the writing, such tremendous work in the program. So it's a combination of both.
Okay. And my other question is for the secondary school students, the summer programs that they took, was that strictly credit recovery? Were they able to take classes in advance, let's say?
So we offered a few opportunities for advancement. Economics, college and statistics, literacy, health, but we did not have too many students enrolled in those two classes. Students who are taking classes for advancement, we additional hours. So this summer, which is one or two students before I make some students.
Okay.
During the holidays, we're never.
Okay. Thank you. So the question I have, everyone knows I'm very big into math, so I was curious to know a little bit more about the project. I thought I heard Ms. Tamara said there was a end of the term math project?
Yes, it is. It was very important for the teachers to incorporate the learning in the room with real-life experience. So one of the projects that they had done was they created an online classroom using polyomias. So there was very specific math formula that they had to follow, and they created it online. So those pictures that I had on there were the results of the creation of this project.
Thank you.
Two questions, just relating to the same thing, for the great presentation, by the way. Very smooth. The Jump Start program, one hundred and fifty students, what was the student-teacher ratio for that?
Yeah, it's the ratio of small, I think, rotation. It was probably around one to twelve. We got out of one grade, third grade, that was a little larger, one to fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then for the middle school, one hundred and thirty students, what was that ratio?
We had about thirteen students.
Okay, so pretty small. For both. Okay, great.
I would like to say thank you so much to each and every one of you for all of your hard work and dedication. We very much appreciate it and appreciate you. Thank you. Great presentation.
Yeah.
Ms. Coles, can I just add one other thing too? Somebody said something about a popcorn day, favorite snack? If you need a taste tester next time, just ring me up, I'll be right there for you. Yes, you can leave.
You guys don't have to stay if you want to go.
You can leave if you'd like, go be with your families. You have nothing, so. Okay. Well, we will now move into liaison reports from our Board of Education. Mrs. Reed, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Mrs. O'Hagan, I know you've got a few things.
Yes, I was able to attend the welcome back to staff meetings that we held, that the district held. And what I just would share with, actually, most of the board was there for one or more of them. But the level of enthusiasm, the level of excitement by staff to be back, to have a real in-person experience, to see one another, was very exciting. It really, it really was. Everybody was just in such a good mood, so anxious to get started with the school year. So that was really nice. And in addition to that, I attended two PTA functions that were aimed at welcoming parents and students back to the school year, one at Plaza and one at the high school. And again, the level of enthusiasm, the level of excitement about starting the year was really palpable. And it was, it was just great to see for all of us that have been in some strange la-la land for the last couple of years. It was really nice for people to be back and in person. I attended, I actually co-chair the Long Island Education Coalition. They had their meeting this morning, and our guest speakers were the president and, I guess, co-chair of the Long Island Association, which is, represents the business community all around Long Island. And we had a lengthy conversation about partnering, forming relationships and partnerships between the business community and schools, doing a better job of that. Certainly in Baldwin, we are, I think, probably the poster example of having a great school to job pipeline and programs, but that's not widespread and it's not coordinated throughout Long Island. And so the conversation was how we can do a better job of that. I also was at the Chamber of Commerce meeting at noon today, and that featured a report by legislator Deborah Muley on a variety of topics having to do with development in the town. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Hagan. If it's okay, I will go ahead and give my report. So I was very fortunate to be able to attend a leadership and education event in Albany in August. And the theme of the event was learning not realized, not learning lost, but learning not realized. And, you know, all different school districts in New York State coming together to discuss how this is all being dealt with going forward, and different ideas and collaborations. And it was quite an educational event. I can also share with you that Dr. Kami was asked to be a speaker there. And so different people were sharing, you know, suggestions going forward of how we can remedy this. And of course, Dr. Kami was able to speak to things that we are already doing here in the district. And when she was able to speak about the class size policies that, you know, again, we don't know how long we'll be able to keep it this way, but that we have intact right now, people were just amazed. And I'm sure that that is going to make a very big difference for our students. And, you know, they pointed out, which I thought was very interesting, that this is probably going to be the greatest opportunity that we as board members will ever have to make the largest difference. And I think that that's, that's very true. And we have to also not think about this as a spending plan, but as an investment strategy. I also absolutely loved that. There was a lot of talk about mental health, as well as teaching our students about civic responsibility, and just some very important notes that the panel speakers had, that we need to teach kids how to have conversations with people whom they disagree with, and then how to problem solve together. Kind of sounds like courageous conversations. And, you know, again, things that are very, very important and that we in Baldwin are already embracing. So they just had a lot of great information, and like I find it many times, I go other places, the things that are spoken about, we are almost ninety percent of the time already doing. So that's something that I'm always very proud of, and as a district, I think that we should all be very proud of. Okay, and that's all I had. Mrs. Tereska?
I just really want to say it's a breath of fresh air to kind of welcome back everyone, but to hear the kids going back to some level of normalcy. We have an athletic schedule to support the teams, we're actually able to attend the games, so that's great. We'll be starting things on schedule and being able to participate in them, so take advantage of that. And hearing them sit next to each other in the cafeteria, closer to each other is also just great. They're just smiling a lot more starting the school year. And so we should all connect and continue that positivity throughout the school year. That's all that I have.
Thank you. For anybody who came in late to the meeting, if you have a comment or a question, please fill out a card in the back of the room. Okay, and we are to that part of our meeting. Mrs. Pratt, do we have any other cards? Okay. Okay.
I don't need the answers right now. I'm going to throw out all the questions.
Are you sure?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Well, but thank you for joining us tonight. And we can email you if that is okay with you? Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you just have to fill out a card for us in the back. Sorry. So while we're waiting, there was one more thing, if I could, that I forgot to add into my liaison report as part of what was talked about up in Albany, and it was something very important, and I forgot about it, I'm sorry. But very, very important on the mental health aspect, about if we have plans in place to open up conversations with our kids, and a suggestion that I'd never heard before that I thought was very powerful, and that is that our kids be asked, who would be their one trusted adult in their school that they could go to if they were in trouble, any kind of trouble, physical trouble, mental trouble? And it's a very good question to pose to them, so they can think about that and, you know, and really plan in their heads, you know, God forbid, if they needed to, who that person would be, because everyone should have somebody. And I just thought that was very, very important to share, so thank you. Okay, thank you so much for your patience. Malika Isles, would you like to come up to the podium, please? Please state your name and address and share with us your question.
Hi, everyone. My name is Malika Isles. I'm a twenty-eight seven from Bayview, Abner. My son, I'm in the ninth grade, or in the ninth grade, had carpooling. Now, you mentioned the classroom sizes, and now we have much smaller sizes. I just hope to know the typical classrooms within the Baldwin High School.
Okay. Okay. I'm. Okay, I'm going to ask Dr. Kami, because she might remember those numbers a little better than I do.
I don't know exact numbers on that. I can tell you that we do cap it--
We start 24, 25--
Right. So we, so this year, we started at anywhere between 23, 24, 25. We do leave room in that because we get late registrants. So the class sizes could be lower. There are times that students are on the rolls and then September comes along and people have moved and we don't have that paperwork when the original numbers, when the original schedule is done. But in general, we try and keep it in that 23, 24, 25 range. Don't hold me to that. There are some that have more than that and there are some that have less than that. But that's the number that we aim for at the middle school and high school.
But also just to share with you, in case you're not aware, our K through 6 classes in our district have, on average, the smallest class size in Nassau County, actually, right now. Something we're very proud of. K through 5, I'm sorry. Yes, K through 5, not the middle school. Okay. Dana Sitan? Sitan, okay. If you would please come up to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
Dana Sitan, six, six, one, twelve, eleven, twelve. My question was just regarding the Chromebook policy. My personal experience is that my daughter brought it to school, it broke in front of the teacher, like the screen did whatever little funky thing it did, and then I got it in the middle. I spoke to the teacher, she said, "I watched that she was using it," and then it stopped working right in front of the school. When I spoke to the principal at the time, she said that I signed the agreement, that whatever happened to it, you know, I was responsible. But it happened while I was in school. So I have an account with my, my school box. So it has a bill there for $91 because they fixed the screen, but I kind of argued with her that it isn't breaking my house. So I know that I signed that policy and I was hesitant to sign it this year because they take it back and forth to school. And I would think that it's my responsibility if it happened in front of the teacher, the teacher and I spoke, she said, "I watched this go off." Why our families, or why would I be responsible for the repair?
Do you want to answer, Mr. Maniella?
So typically, as you know, the contract parent's responsible for anything that's broken. This sounds like an unusual case. If, if it was something that was due to failure, malfunctions, then we get advised of that. And typically, once we send out for repair, they verify that, too, that it's not the user's fault, that the device's fault, the builders come through. So I'd have to look into your particular case more with the pull, so I get your in-contact information.
What grade is your child?
She was in fourth, she was in fifth grade.
Yeah.
It happened when she was in fourth grade.
Okay.
What school?
Lennox.
Yeah, so I'll get the, your contact information and I'll review what the, the vendor said the damage was, and I'll get back to you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a question from our new Herald reporter, but if it's okay, we're just going to talk with you offline, like after the meeting, or we'll--
Right, but explain why. Right, because the policy--
Right, because that's, that's the policy regarding the press. Okay? Thank you.
Welcome, by the way.
Yes, welcome. Yes. Okay. Let me just figure out where we're at here. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report as amended and dated September 14th, 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-CE 504 Committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education for March 2022 and August 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as Board President, I'm calling for consideration of a consent agenda as amended for business items 1 through 10. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under consent agenda for further discussions and a separate vote? Nothing? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, including business items 1 through 10?
Somewhht.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve business items 1 through 10?
Somewhht.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities report for September 2022 through June 2023, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Somewhht.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education has a first read of the following policy. Policy 2160, School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics. Being as this is a first read, we do not have to vote on this. The Board of Education reads and adopts the following policy revision. Policy 5300.25, Code of Conduct, Student Dress Code Revised. Yes.
So the edits that were there, those are edits based on recommendations? Because I saw the--
From the code of conduct?
Yeah, it was like a lot of track changes in that.
So the edits on the code of conduct this year were really all edits based on restorative circles. Because we implemented that this year for all students, we needed to change the code of conduct based on that. There'll be a committee convened this year to review the whole code of conduct again.
Okay.
So when this has its, what, can you guys hear me? I feel like mine's--
Yeah, I don't know, I feel like it's not working.
Yeah. So in terms of the second read, remind me what our process is again. Is that when we provide any feedback? At what point do we as a board provide feedback?
So after the first read would be the time for discussion around it? The second read, we read and adopt?
So right now would have been when--
You're adopting.
Right now, we're, no, this is first. This is the first read.
No.
No, this is the read and adopt.
If you want to comment on the code of, the district officer--
That's when I would be providing the comment now.
Correct.
But the read and adopt--
It's on the code of conduct.
Right.
Dress code.
Oh, this is the, oh, oh, oh. So you guys adopted this at the last board meeting, but there was one change? What was the one change? Oh, right. There was an inconsistency. There was an inconsistency between the student version and the full version.
Okay.
And so this corrected the inconsistency.
Yeah, I saw the--
So it was actually one small change.
Ah, okay, because it was like a long paragraph of changes.
Yeah, it was one small change.
Okay. It was the move down that caused the change. So we, when we have comments, need to do it at the first read? Correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, under other-- Oh, we didn't vote. I'm so, I'm so sorry.
Under one that we adopted.
Yes, yes, okay. Yeah, Annie threw us off. I'm sorry, Mrs. Dreska.
I didn't see anything to vote. That's why I was like, oh, we just pivoted all the way.
Okay.
I'm supposed to wait for any questions?
Yes, okay. Any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion? Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, now, under other, we need to choose a delegate for the resolutions meeting on October 17th, which--
He did this on purpose, didn't he?
We could vote him in.
Yes, we could.
I like that idea. Let's do it, ladies.
I think he did it last year.
He did. He's done it a few times.
Yeah.
What's the date?
October 17th is the resolutions meeting.
If I could just weigh in.
I'm not even here. On this, this is the only time this has ever happened. A, that it's virtual, and B, that it's not occurring during the convention.
Right. So it is--
So it's the 17th?
Right, the Monday before, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, is the business meeting, and it's virtual. So I'm saying that because I've, the last several years, I would prefer someone newer to the board be that voting delegate. But it may preclude some of you because it happens during the workday.
I'm traveling for work. I'm not even here.
You know, and of course, I would love to nominate Tom, since he's not here, but I have a feeling--
See what happens when you don't go to the meeting?
He may be in the same, you know, so he may be in the same predicament that--
So is this the meeting that happens at convention?
Yes, yes. Yes, I don't ask it. I didn't make that decision, but--
What day of the week is this?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
That takes me out of it, because I'm on, you know, I'm sleeping.
I can do it. Okay. I can do it. Good, thank you. Thank you.
October 17th, okay. I might be speaking without, I, I'm sure I can, that's fine.
Yeah, I was trying to see what time my flight gets in. I might, if I get in at a decent time, then--
I mean, it's virtual, so honestly, if you wanted to be together, you could.
Yeah, let me see what time--
And very often, we have a, you know, kind of a, you know, a second person. So in case, you know, when it was in, when it was in person, we always had somebody. So if someone doesn't feel well, or is tired of it, then, then the next person can come in and take the seat. So, you know, you guys can work it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to look right, and I'll let you know what time my flight gets in, and then maybe I can do it with you.
I can certainly do it.
Yeah, I'll see Utah yet. I know I'm in Utah, but I'll be, I'll figure it out.
Okay. I mean, does that--
Me too.
Joe, that doesn't have to be written in stone tonight?
No, no, no. The fact that we had the conversation, I think, is enough.
Our next meeting isn't until October 19th, which is after this. So we kind of need to seal the deal on what it is going to be.
Correct, so it can be Sue is the first--
Right.
--name on the list.
So we're virtual. All right, I get in at like 1:00 in the morning, so it's fine. I could like sleep in it. I'll be, I'll be in New York by that time.
I, I mean, I, I can do it, I don't--
Go ahead, then.
Want you to have to--
It's fine, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out. We'll be on it together.
Yeah, yes, okay.
It's usually just the opposite, yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, are there any additional things to discuss? From any of the board members? Does anyone have anything? No? Okay, so here are some important dates to remember. Tomorrow night, September 15th, Grade 7 and 8 Math Info Night for Parents at the middle school, 6:00 PM. On September 19th, Continuing Education Fall Semester Begins. That's Benwell. So that's, we're, we're happy to see that back.
Registration is light, so if you want to do Zumba, it's opening.
Really? I was upset I missed the registration. Oh, we'll have to check, check into that. Okay, on September 26th and 27th, schools are closed. On September 28th, the Community Coalition of Baldwin will meet here in the district office at 7:00 PM. And they will be discussing the Grand Baldwin Festival, which will be on October 1st, 12 to 4:30, behind the library, such a great event. And Homecoming will be on October 8th. Baldwin versus Port Washington, Baldwin High School, 2:00 PM. On October 5th, schools are closed. And on October 17th, the Baldwin Foundation for Education will meet here at the district office at 7:30. And our next board meeting is Wednesday, October 19th, at 8:00 PM, at Brookside School. And please check your district calendar for upcoming PTA meetings. Know your school night and picture day at each school. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. It was wonderful to see you all back.
Somewhht.
Can I, I didn't do, give me a second.
You said thank you like we were done.
No. I got it. Can I please get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Somewhht.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Coles.